Ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is set as before. City Council is ready to begin. Gentlemen, please remove your hats. Everyone keep aside all electronic equipment. Those that talk to the mayor or officers who have tolerated and violated their subject to objection in possible prosecution. Sixty-five minutes of order. Hope you rise and pledge allegiance. This is our question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The standup chairman of course, Mary Garcia Isaxen. May the name Rodriguez.
Here.
Maria Reagan here. Joseph Pauli.
Here.
And Robert Rodriguez here. May we have a board?
Public comments.
We have several speakers, starting with Luis Cigana. Luis Cigana, ten minutes.
Bueno, muchas gracias. Este, pues sabemos que tenemos muchos problemas, pero queremos ver un poquito más de emoción por parte del Consilio. Hay personas que les han pedido el asocoro, hacer desplantes. Está bien, pero es problemario, banquetas, etc. Yo tengo un lugar específico que si no lo arreglan, tiene trabajo, la que dimos la vez pasada, se va a meter la olla en mi casa, y yo no sé quién va a responder por eso. Es una inquietud. Atienda, por favor, las cosas más urgentes que pueden traer a pérdidas para el Consilio y para la ciudad de Socorro. Hay que hacer mejoras para cuando reba, cuando vengan malos tiempos, no suceda eso. Otra cosa, yo quisiera que el Consilio se coordinara, no se tuvieran, este, mirando de malas ganas, apoyarse unos a otros, porque muchas veces uno se apoya, no apoyan a uno, y al otro dice, bueno, por mí me apoyan, ahora yo me acuerdo con la mía, y no, no responden. Entonces, necesitamos ver un nuevo movimiento a la gente del Consilio, porque no estamos viendo que produzca nada. No vemos, vemos unos subir taxes y pagarse sueldo mejores sueldos, y es lo único que se ve, es lo único que se puede ver en eso. Este, muchas gracias por permitirme hablar.
Gracias.
Tommy Paul.
Mr. Paul, you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Tommy Paul, a nearest concerned citizen, one more time. Since I was going out to the certificate application, you have not received the tax money from the people and everything. And while you are going out for certificate application, while you are in main dock, and also on the purchasing order, they're being violated because nobody's willing to do with the purchasing order. And since I've been in office, I have not seen the financial report at the end of each month, or any financial report at the month at all. From your city manager, it's supposed to be doing it. It says there's a work description in Order 186. He's supposed to be having the financial report for the fiscal year at the end of each month to let you know what money there is to spend and what money can be spent. And also on this part, by working on the park, we need the streets done. We don't need no parks worked on. We need the streets of the community to be worked on, lights in the community. Have you all been out at one, two in the morning to see the lights where they're out, where you need more lights and everything? That's what we need to get done. We need to get the streets greased, over laid, the ones that be done. There's streets here that have been here since eighty-six and eighty-four that have not been touched at all. Just no patchwork and everything. We need overlays. We need to put, stop working on streets that have been worked on two or three times before, and start putting on streets that needed more, doing the same streets over and over again. That's what my main concern is. And I wish you all good and well for that certificate application, because we're, the city's already in debt too much. And a large person said on the news, we have three million dollar surplus. You want to get up to five million surplus for the fire trucks. We need to forget about getting the fire trucks ourselves. We don't have the money to pay for all that. If the county's paying for it, we have the volunteer fire department. If you can, let them try and get some more. We need more help from them. They don't need to be dishing out more money. We need the money here for the city's support. We don't need to be throwing it away anymore. Thank you very much. Take care.
Sophie Ramos. Mrs. Ramos, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Mayor and council, good evening. I would like to first of all thank one of our council members. Thank you very much for all your work for District One. I thank you once again, because I will not let you forget. I guess for the time that you have served, you worked hard to represent us. You were, you really had the guts where many didn't to put up a good fight and make sure that the voices of our people were respected. And I thank the other council members that came into office, District Four, at large, and our mayor, because you have really come together and listened to the voice of the people, at least to the, my voice, and the ones that I have brought forward to you regarding the respect that we wanted back. I thank you because during special meetings before, we were not allowed to speak, and now we can. And there are many other issues that I could bring forth, but I know time is limited. But I thank you because I see finally that there is some respect here. And I can say some, because there's still more that needs to be worked at in certain areas. But I will tell you that, also staff members, I thank you for trying hard and coming up to par and really respecting. I feel that the doors are really open for us to walk in there, and as for information, and information will be provided to, and this to me, I have no problem. And anybody that I send there, you either have any problems with asking for the information that they need. And I will tell you that I am very content with the work that you have done from the time that you have there, from eight to now. You have done a lot, so much, that has made a difference in this, for this community. And I know that there is drainage, I know there's many other different issues that need to be taken care of, and it is not a cost of money. Either we raise taxes, or we get certificates of application, but what we need to, what you all need to do is do what you're doing now, is being transparent. Letting the citizens know when you're going to raise taxes and for what, how it is going to be spent. Certificates of application, I'm learning that you do need to, but explain to the community for what, and how are they being spent? Are they going to be spent for that appropriate project, or are they going to be spending other things besides what they're being asked for? So I thank you that you're bringing transparency also in the executive session. Thank you for putting the information that before, we were in the dark, we never, at least somebody cares to let us know what is going on. We are not in the dark anymore, and I thank you for that. So I hope that in the near future, with other persons that have, that will be stepping into position, that they respect the safety of the community as well, and that we'll continue to see, everybody working in unity.
Mrs. Ramos, one second.
Thank you, I got this.
Sergio Pajé. Señor Pajé, ten minutes.
The number chess. Pues yo tengo un resentimiento con ustedes por la cosa de cómo actuaron en nuestra selección, ¿verdad? Esta fue una campaña de odio y de resentimiento, señores, a trabajar. Señores, yo como ciudadano les pido que dejen de las diferencias y se pongan a trabajar como los que son unos servidores públicos, que los elegimos para servir y no para detener comunidades, etc. Sean responsables en sus posiciones, no se dejen llevar por sus diferencias personales, que para eso los elegimos, para que nosotros los cuidamos como los que salimos corriendo por sus persas que tienen, y nosotros somos los culpables de, nosotros no somos los culpables de sus castillos. Enseñemos con la obra, no por palabras, la voluntad que hay de ser tener para Socorro, señores. Ya dejen de engañar a la gente con sus mentiras. Sean responsables y pónganse a trabajar, que se vea lo que hagan en Socorro para eso. Para eso. A veces muy adán Socorro, porque así lo tienen, señores. Si no pueden con sus puestos, renuncien, eso es lo mejor para la ciudadanía. No estén perdiendo su tiempo medio, no les pagamos para nada, no vemos nada en la ciudad. Señores, a trabajar unidos es lo que deben de hacer. No más y menos. Gracias.
Gracias.
Norah Zapater. Mrs. Zapater, you have three minutes.
First of all, I'd like to ask and request that if this podium is for us, the people that come and speak, I would like to have at least a little bit access to it, so that I can place my items on the podium. For next time, can you please be a little bit respectful and loud? Like you all have a place to put your stuff. I mean, I would like to, do you mind if I close this at this time?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I believe that the podium is for the constituents to be able to come up here and speak, and I believe that they should have an opportunity to be able to use it for themselves. At this time, I would like to say that I am very concerned, because if you recall, I was here when you all approved the budget, and I'm very concerned. I know that we're only allowed to speak on three items on the agenda. However, there are several items on the agenda that I would like to talk about, but I won't be able to, so I've chosen two that I will be talking on, plus this one. But in connection, item seventeen is very touching because of the procurement method that you all are going to talk about. It's sad to hear that you all are talking about procurement, because procurement is supposed to be taken care of, and your purchasing policy, it's a policy that you already have in place. Also, item eighteen, you have something about forfeiting monies. My concern is forfeiting money is for what? What can you spend it on? Is it always going to be spent on getting equipment to the police officers? Hey, can we use some of that money for streets? Item twenty-two, preliminary flat approvals. I mean, aren't these supposed to be going before planning a zoning commission, before they come to council? Then you've got item twenty-three, another approving of subdivision. Shouldn't that also have gone before service, before the planning and zoning? And my concern is on the after-the-plant purchases, item twenty-four, again, purchasing policy, what's happening? I think that there is no transparency, because the proof is in your agenda. You are not administering the funds right, and I believe that the biggest concern is that you all promised when you first came in and made, and I, and to this date, we have not received anything. And like I said, when I came before you to approve the budget, make sure you know what you're doing, because that budget wasn't good, and I wasn't wrong. You're making an amendment tonight, and I will speak on that one. But with all due respect to each and everybody, all of you that are sitting there, I am very concerned about Socorro. And believe me, I will be here if I have something to tell you. I believe that you all were elected by the people, for the people, not for yourselves. Please, please, you all have my phone number. I've called several of you, I don't get the returns. Please, give me an opportunity to serve my community by working with you, because I can't do it in three minutes. Give me one more. I really want to work hard for my community, and I have shown it to you.
Mrs. Zapater, your time's up.
You see what I mean? Not enough time. Thank you.
Daniel Prestes.
And just to clarify something, the agenda is worth taking time, going, and they did from the rest of the board. Thank you.
Yeah, because the proof should have been on this agenda.
You have three minutes.
Good evening, council. I'm here on behalf of the El Paso Mission Trail Association to invite you all to participate with us on our promotional efforts for the Rio Bosque. As you all know, we have this resource, it's three hundred and seventy-two acres, it's right on the border to Socorro, and we're launching a promotional campaign for it. This is really a great opportunity for us to do something in terms of, you know, the benefit of the community, for all of these, you know, aesthetic and, you know, recreational reasons, but of course also because it's part of it. What we want to do with the nine-mile corridor and the Mission Trail. It's, you know, ecotourism, it's a lot of things. When this is flooded, we have all birds that migrate through, from, you know, the Tundra and from Canada, Alaska, all the way to South America, right? And they, they will stop here when we have water. Right now, there's many needs for the Rio Bosque, and there's many benefits to the community for the Rio Bosque, and certainly there's a lot of benefits for the Mission Trail. But right now, we would like to, actually just inform you that we will be sending you invitations to promotional speeches, the presentations that are going to be done in our offices, you know, in the SLEDA, the El Paso Mission Trail Office of the Corpo de Santa Rosa in Alameda. And just one thing that I want you all to think about. We have the Socorro, which is the main thoroughfare, but there are no signs showing where the Rio Bosque is. People go by, they don't even know how to get to it. There are actually no signs, zero, on any thoroughfare showing where the Rio Bosque is. So I would like you all to think about the fact that all we need is a little sign, an arrow pointing to the Rio Bosque, okay? And also, we'll be sending you invitations, you know, so that you guys can come and learn more about the possibilities and the things that we would like to do with that part. Thank you.
May you do so last, please.
Moving on to item number five. Danny Prestes. That's not the other one. Presentation by El Paso Collaborative Regarding Services. You have ten minutes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, mayor and council, and thank you for allowing me an opportunity to present to you the different types of programs that we, that we provide. My name is Delia Chávez Lapiñez. I am the executive director of the El Paso Collaborative. The El Paso Collaborative is a nonprofit organization that was founded back in nineteen ninety-six. The copy of the, of the presentation that I forwarded to you is a copy of our mission. Internationally, the El Paso Collaborative facilitates affordable housing and economic development. Some of the programs that we provide are programs that the city of Socorro implements as well, such as the Texas Department of Positive Community Affairs. I know that you all have participated in those programs. There is three particular programs that we are currently involved with, and we have helped some of the citizens here in Socorro, and that's with the Contract of Decompression and the Housing Rehabilitation Assistance Program, and the Downpaying Assistance Program as well. There is one particular program, and the primary reason why I'm here, and this is the Act Vet Program, and this is a program that was designed specifically for veterans. And it's a program where we have one of the homes that we acquired for the veterans is located here in Socorro. In fact, the address is 10360 Vallen del Mar. This particular property, about a month or so ago, was vandalized. We acquired the property, and then we have to wait to acquire funds so that we can rehabilitate it. So in the meantime, the property is pretty much like a sitting duck, and it's most unfortunate that it was vandalized, and so that's going to incur more cost for us to be able to rehab. And so I would like to request, if at all possible, until such time that we get this property rehabilitated, if we could ask that your police department patrol that area a little bit more, and a little bit closer, so that they don't give us an opportunity to rehab the house, and then we have to market it for the veterans and then sell it, and even after we sell it, of course, you know, we're not asking not to patrol the area, but just while we resell it, if you would consider having a little more patrolling there. It's a great program. If any of you or anybody out in the audience, if they know of any veterans that are looking for home ownership, this is a great program. It provides them a twenty-five percent discount on the appraised value of the house. Very recently, we had a house out, it's actually inside the city of El Paso, by Aquafaba, Joe Battle, and Edgmere, and it's a house that was appraised at a hundred and fifty thousand, but we sold it for a hundred and twenty thousand for the veteran. So depending on the appraised value of the house, we will guarantee a twenty-five percent discount sale for the veteran. We also have a program that's called the NSP, which stands for Neighborhood Stabilization Program, and these are homes that are foreclosed. It's one of the biggest awards in the history of the collaborative that we have received. It's a ten million dollar grant, where we acquire foreclosed homes, we rehab them, and we put them back in service to the communities, so that we can stabilize the communities. With this particular program and other programs that we have, I'm also asking if you all have referrals, you know, people that are looking for home ownership. This program is for resale, and then we also have some of these homes that we're using for rental units as well, because as we all know, some people, not all people are ready for home ownership. The last and final program that we have is, we're a community, we all are a financial institution, which is a community lender. We're not a bank. We make non-traditional loans for people that are not bankable, and we provide a lot of technical assistance, so that we can in turn make these people bankable, so that maybe in the future, they'll be able to obtain a loan at your traditional bank. So this pretty much concludes my presentation. It probably took about three minutes, I guess, but I didn't want to take a chance, because I know that it's only three minutes for under open forum, and so that's why I had asked if I could be placed on the agenda. And so I'm hoping that we'll be able to continue to work together every time that we have applicants that are from Socorro, they're very near and dear to my heart, as you all may know it, even though I work for the El Paso Collaborative, I'm a former staff member of the city of Socorro, and I still keep the city of Socorro very close in heart.
You haven't changed, have you?
Pardon me? You haven't changed. Oh, well, thank you. Yes. Oh, but I have.
No.
So thank you very much. And all the handoff that I gave you is our contact information, in case there's any questions regarding some of the programs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Mr. Rodriguez.
No.
No, no, um, so any of the veterans that want a home, you're going to be able to provide some assistance for them?
Yes, that is correct. So just any, anybody that you might know that is looking for home ownership. And not just veterans, but this, the Act Vet is designed for veterans, yes. Okay, well, thank you and good night.
Thank you.
Item number six, presentation by above international regarding health insurance package proposal for fiscal year two thousand and fourteen.
Good evening, mayor and city council, and local city public. I'm Randy McGraw with Love International Insurance Services. And, okay, and I'm here to just give you a briefing on your benefit, your employment benefits offering for the employees in the city of Socorro. I have just a little bit of background, because I know some of you weren't here last year when we were going through a transition process. First of all, Love International is an international company, and we're based, our local office is based here in El Paso. Myself, Randy McGraw, and Lisa O'Keane are benefit consultants, and we were retained by the city last year, and basically to help you get out of a situation that the city had ended up in, in terms of how they paid for their medical benefits. And you were involved in a self-funded benefits plan that really was in your best interest. So the city retained us back in October of last year, we conducted a request for proposal process. We implemented some changes in your benefit programs. All of your benefit contracts renew on January the first, and that's primarily, primarily why we're here, is to give you an update, because we're approaching January the first, and as you know, there's a lot of talk about healthcare, health insurance, health insurance reform in the media, and it's time for your renewal coming up on January one, and we're just here to do an update on where we are. Last year, when we did the request for proposal, we ended up changing some of your vendors that provide services. You currently use Blue Cross Blue Shield for your available benefits plan. Sun Life is the provider of your dental benefits plan. N E S Vision provides vision benefits for your employees, and Transamerica provides life and supplemental life insurance. And you have critical illness, cancer plans provided by Aflac. During the solicitation last year, we attempted to negotiate as many multi-year rate guarantees for you, to try to lock down your rates, and we were able to do that for everything except the medical and dental plans, which isn't that abnormal on a group of your size. We did receive notice of your renewal under Blue Cross Blue Shield, and overall, this is probably hard to read on the projector, it's not that large of print, but overall, what it translates to is that the premiums offered through Blue Cross Blue Shield for the benefit plans that you offer are scheduled to increase by about seventeen percent on January the first. Part of that increase is due to taxes and fees associated with the healthcare reform act, and if part of it is just insurance carriers raising the cost of health insurance. There's also a smaller increase on the dental plan of about nine percent. So far, you know, we haven't made any decisions about benefits, et cetera, and you'll see in a moment that we have started a solicitation process again to check the marketplace and see if there's any other alternatives that are more favorable for the city in terms of offering benefits, similar to what you offer now, at perhaps better rates than what Blue Cross Blue Shield is offering. in terms of offering benefits similar to what you offer now at perhaps better rates than what Blue Cross Blue Shield is offering. You currently pay for your employees' cost of individual health insurance for the medical and dental plan. First of all, all those other insurance contracts aren't up for renewal, so those rates are stable. The benefits are stable as well. So for your employee benefits on the medical plan, the city contributes $485.32 a month. That makes the cost of coverage for a single employee nothing each month. That also translates to your budget of about $454,000 per year. A 17% increase is about $77,000 increase. So it puts the city in a position of assessing its practices and how it wants to go forward. You'll see on the next page, you know, our timeline for where we are, we'll be basically, we'll be back in a couple of weeks to give you the results of the solicitation. There are a couple of changes that are happening due to healthcare reform that will be effective January the first, no matter who you choose to do business with for your insurance program. First of all, there'll be no more pre-existing condition waiting periods on any person. In the past, that provision was waived on dependents up to the age of 19. Under the Healthcare Reform Act on January 1st, any new person, employer dependents that join your plan or any plan after January 1st, it's covered right away with no waiting period of existing conditions. That provision puts a little bit of inflation on your waiting. Also, another change too is right now your plan has a, the one that most of your employees participate in has a $500 deductible. And it has, I forget the out-of-pocket cap, but $2,500 overage limit. Currently, when you have copays for drugs and office visits, those don't apply to your out-of-pocket benefit. Under healthcare reform, they will start to apply to that. So it will actually be better truth in advertising in that when people look at this, they can know that that out-of-pocket benefit really means less than the benefit you pay. That also puts a little bit of inflation on your premiums and everybody's premiums. There's one provision in healthcare reform that's going to require some action on your part. You currently have a policy that says when you hire new employee, their coverage begins the first of the month after 90 days. And under healthcare reform, they've changed the rules on the waiting period to say that that waiting period cannot be more than 90 days. So in other words, the 90th day may fall in the middle of the month. The first of the month might be another 15 days. So that is going to require the city to change its procedure on that. Our recommendation would be to call it 60 days, first of the month after 60 days, and then you'll be able to begin controlling as far as that goes. Last year also, when we were presenting concepts and options to the council, we talked about consumer-driven plans with health savings account. And even though that was an offering that was available, it was the decision of the city not to go down that path. And given the short timeframe for the presentation, this discussion could take a long time. But in your presentation on this page number seven, I believe it is? That just gives you a short roadmap to how health savings accounts work. And so once the proposals come back in, and we've already been visiting with your HR department over concepts and alternatives to be thinking about, that might be a concept that we come back again when we come back on November 21st. This just shows you the actual benefits and rates under the dental plan, and it reflects that 9.5% rate increase there. The city currently contributes about $17,000 per year on that. This is a much less impact. I know it's still an increase, but that would be just shy of $1,700 in a year increase on the city's budget if you accept this provision or these rates and move forward. So once the renewal information came in, we advised the city as quickly, now instantly, in terms of the information. That set the motion or request to go ahead and conduct a formal request for proposal process. So you've already run some advertisements, several carriers. We've sent information out to a lot of carriers, some other carriers have asked for additional information. You can see that it was actually released a week ago. And today was the deadline for some questions. Some questions have come in from some of the vendors who've been answering this for them. A week, next Friday, the proposals will actually be received here at the city. And then we'll evaluate those or meet with your HR department, and then we'll be back to discuss the findings with you on the 21st so that if there's a need to change, that you can make some decisions. This discussion will likely take at least 30 minutes, if not a little bit longer, especially if there are going to be any changes in your policies or procedures or changes in the carriers. And it would be important to make some tiny decisions because your plan renews or is effective on January 1st. You've got Thanksgiving holidays coming up, of course, the Christmas holidays coming up. And regardless of whether you change insurance carriers or not, we need to conduct open enrollment for your employees so that they can make some plan elections and make their decisions for the next year being 2014. And that just concludes the summary report we had for you. If you had questions, be happy to answer those.
Item number seven, presentation by Sam Millie regarding future invitation for the city of Suborro.
Do you have a question or motion to rule it?
Yes. Well, we can postpone it for new council sometime.
It's up to you.
No, no, no.
What do you want?
Well, table, yeah. We'll make a motion to.
To table the item?
To table, yeah.
To table the first?
Yes.
We need a motion.
I make a motion to table.
Motion made by Renee Rodriguez, seconded by Maria Reyes, to table item number seven for the November 21st. Mary Garcia is absent, Renee Rodriguez. Maria Reyes. Joseph Pauli. And Gloria Rodriguez. Item table. Renee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Maria Reyes.
Yes.
Joseph Pauli. And Gloria Rodriguez. Item table.
Moving on to the public hearing. Public hearing to establish a transportation reimbursement zone, promote transportation projects within the proposed zone. 635, the hearing is not open. I'd like to speak on what's yours. 635, the hearing is not closed. Moving on to the incentive agenda.
I approve the motion to move item number ten, other regular consent agenda, other consent agenda to regular agenda, please. I approve the rest of the consent.
Second motion. Is that a consent petition? I believe it is. Can I ask, maybe you hear the name of the number of items. Do you want us to move it to the regular agenda? Yes. You answer your questions, yeah. Any questions?
Mary Garcia is absent, Renee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Maria Reyes.
Yes.
Joseph Pauli.
Yes.
And Gloria Rodriguez.
Okay, now at this time, Mr. Rodriguez, it's a public TMO board here in Brooklyn. I did not see it here. Mr. Randy, step out, obviously, check. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Northley. It was me. We expect it here instead. Moving on to item 13, introduction, first reading, and calling for a public hearing on ordinance 295. Number 10. Approval authorizing chief manager officer and city manager to sign an agreement requesting the city of Suborro's membership in the cooperative purchasing network, TCPM, and authorizing the chief manager officer and city manager to be the primary point of contact for the city of Suborro and to execute all other necessary documents and procedures required for membership. Mr. Cruz.
I'd like to go ahead and make an amendment to the agenda item to include the mayor as well.
Second. Motion second. Any discussions here? Do you agree? No, I'd like to move it to the end of the second. We have one more way to go ahead and do that.
Motion made by Maria Reyes, seconded by Renee Rodriguez, to approve item number 10, to include the mayor. Mary Garcia is absent, Renee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Maria Reyes.
Yes.
Joseph Pauli.
Yes.
And Gloria Rodriguez.
I'm not sure.
Motion approved.
Item 13, introduction, first reading, and calling for a public hearing on ordinance 295. Amendment number six, an ordinance of the city of Suborro amending the organizational chart for the city of Suborro. Mr. Northley, again, this.
Other than, we just want to demonstrate the structure of our operation. So I provided, I don't give any questions unless you have anything else to add.
The only question that I really had, I guess, is just for the PIO, is that going to be a city position or a contracted position?
It could be a contract position.
Okay, then does this contract position should be under council, not the city manager? Because then it would fall under council, like the attorney and judge.
If you prefer.
Yes.
Okay, I can go in and make that change.
That was the only thing that I saw, that would make it a contracted position, so it would fall under the administration position. Does anybody else have any discussion on this?
No, no, no.
And then we're making the parks and rents to separate council, supervisor.
That is correct. We're not having empty parking ahead because we have supervisor for the recreation and a supervisor under the parks division. So now it's reflecting that way. Our charter would reflect that change. We're also moving the code enforcers to our planning zone and making civilian positions as opposed to our officers. And our property and evidence will also be compared to civilian position.
Okay, just want to clarify, we're moving our code enforcers so that we can make them public. That means that you save money in the long run.
Oh, yes, it's a cost.
Because we can use these officers that are code enforcers to put them on.
On patrol.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So right now, the reason we have it is that we have the code enforcers, but they're working under the police department, correct?
That is correct.
So if they're needed on duty for police, they can pull away from code enforcing duties and get to patrol. So this way, we would basically separate them. We create two new positions, like code enforcers only and strictly only under the planning zone department.
That is correct.
And the police officers would stay as police officers without having to switch off both duties.
Patrol, that is correct.
Because we've been facing that, we've been shortage of police officers, and yet we can't do both of them at the same time. So either we do, you know, two, three hours of code enforcing, and then the rest of the day, there's nobody there to enforce anything.
Correctly, because they're becoming civilian positions. They're at a lesser pay than an actual officer.
I think this would help with this problem as well, since, you know, because we are short. But, I mean, we were the 16th safest city in Texas, so now we improve on that safety. We're going to keep on going.
That is correct.
If you didn't hear, we were the 16th safest city in Texas. We beat El Paso, and they're going to move on to our city contract. So, I mean, our police department raised that back there.
What was the first thing that you wanted?
Just the PIO to go on to the city council. Since it's a contracted position, it doesn't have to go under the administration. It's a contract.
Mr. Northley? Anybody else?
No, we're good.
So then, what would be the motion to make with that change, Mr. Northley?
Yes, I would suggest with the amendment as described to adopt, I'm sorry, to amend the proposal or chart as described and then adopt it as amended.
Any other questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve for the public hearing with the changes. I would remember about our.
Motion second. Any further discussions?
Motion made by Maria Reyes, seconded by Joseph Pauli, to approve the organizational chart with the corrections. Mary Garcia is absent, Renee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Maria Reyes.
Yes.
Joseph Pauli.
Yes.
And Gloria Rodriguez. Item number 14.
Introduction, first reading, and calling for a public hearing of ordinance 323, amendment number one of the city of Suborro, Texas, adopting an amended budget fiscal year 2013 through 2014. Mr. Northley.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city council. Basically, this is the funding mechanism for the changes that just got made with the organizational chart. And the second portion of it is really taking $50,000 out of one of the reserves that's used for purchasing of police equipment and actually utilizing it for camera. And Lieutenant Matoria could give you a better description of what that is. But the transfer is really money that we already have in a savings area. Now we're getting approval to spend that money on police equipment. And he has a communication to give more elaboration. But that's the two changes that the budget transfers is actually doing. One, financing the personnel change that just got approved with the organizational chart. And number two, actually spending money that has been accumulated over a period of years for police equipment.
Questions?
Do you have anything to say, Mr. Cruz?
Mayor and council, that money that he's asking you, if it's for you to approve or to expenditure, is as a corporate money that can only be used for police-related activities, such as equipment and undercover operations. Because they were seized through drug, drug money, this is a regular money, or through vehicles that were sold to auction. And that vehicle is specifically for police equipment and other type of things like that.
So, questions? So just to clarify, we can't use that money for anything other than the police department?
The police-related activities, and it's a federal mandate, and the rules or regulations that we have to abide by.
We just want people to be well aware of why we're asking for that money for the use of our police department. And that we cannot use those funds for anything.
That's correct. That's why. Now, like Mr. Northley was saying, it's an accumulation of money that we've had for years there. And we're just asking for the transfer so we can spend it the way it's supposed to be spent, to the federal regulations.
Thank you. Motion second.
Mrs. Rodriguez.
Oh, yes, I second that motion. I have a motion by.
Motion made by Gloria Rodriguez, seconded by Renee Rodriguez, to approve item number 14. Mary Garcia is absent, Renee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Maria Reyes.
Yes.
Joseph Pauli. And Gloria Rodriguez.
Yes.
Item approved?
Item 15, discretion and action regarding models of apartment construction projects. Mr. Martin?
We do have a speaker, mayor, for that item?
For 15.
For number 15.
Number 15.
So, you have a question?
Mr. Ramos?
Can I wait till after the discussion, please?
Yes. Is everything okay?
On item number 14, it was an introduction, so we cannot have any speakers until the 21st, when we have a public hearing.
So on item 14, it's calling for a public hearing. So we're going to have a public hearing before the item is approved or denied. So basically, this is just an introduction. There's no public speaking on this item yet. That's why we have a public hearing, like we had the TRZ meeting earlier. So that's why there's no speaking or nothing. First, any questions?
Was it not a sign-in sheet that you could not sign up for those two items?
Are we there now?
No.
No, we do apologize, but it isn't the ordinance, and this has happened before. We apologize, but like I said, we do have a public hearing in the next couple of weeks.
May I be given the opportunity to talk, sir? Because you all failed to notify me that I couldn't sign up for those. So I'm going to miss out on speaking at two other items because you all failed to do that.
No, no, like I said, this has happened before. I don't know where you signed up for, similar to this. So we can go back and say yes. So I do apologize, like I said, it is calling for a public hearing, which will happen in the next meeting. Which will be the 21st.
I'm sorry, yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and Council. I ask that you may place this item on the agenda because I've had communications with both Mr. Northley, these two members of council, three members of council. The construction project is ongoing. I don't know, in fact, I'm looking for direction from council, if there was a will on council to terminate the project, to reduce the scope of the project. I can, I can map out for you what your options are, and I can do, you have the ability. I can, I can make, uh, view what your options are and I can do, you have the ability to do that in the executive session in terms of what the legal consequences are for terminating the contract in one of two obvious ways and one third way that's less obvious. But I was just looking for direction from council and I think the city staff is looking for direction from council for what to do about model horses market.
So, on this, just so everybody's aware of it, basically, it's a park in District Four on Peters Road, can't be direct. And so, basically, it was already parked there. The previous council decided to go ahead and build a new park there already and so the original budget was for $700,000. Once we came into office, it had gone to over $3 million. The playground alone was going to cost us $750,000. So, we went ahead and we've been talking about reducing the contracts, seeing what the options are. We did cancel out that playground because we felt it was way too expensive, I mean, $750,000 just for a playground. We weren't going to have that, so right now we're trying to decide what's going to happen with that park, which, Rodriguez, if you have more information on that.
We've been, we've been, that's one of the things that I've always said, it's not wasteful spending, I won't say that, I mean, it's quality of life, first of all. But the thing is, is that we need, we need those funds to be used somewhere else. District One took a part of it in the floods. We could have used it in our infrastructure. We could have done a lot of stuff, roads, lights. Mr. Wagner said it, you know, that, you know, when you're out at night, of course, I'm out at night, but most of us are aware that it's dark and we could use these funds somewhere else. The scope of a park is nice, you know, we, who doesn't like parks? But over $3 million, I mean, when a park is already there, to me, it's unacceptable. What we're trying to do here is that we're trying to minimize the scope of it. We tried to already, we already took, you know, $700,000 out of the, out of the cost, but yet, you know, it's still too high and we're trying to, you know, since I got here, we've been trying to talk to these individuals and really said, hey, you know what, we need to really minimize it so that we can use these funds somewhere else. It just comes to the point where they continue to work. We need to stop it.